Call is July 3rd, Broken Arrow City Council Meeting to Order. Didn't have anyone sign up for invocations, so we'll go to roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Booty?
Here.
Thurman?
Here. Please stand and join Sam White from Troop 970 in the Pledge of Allegiance. Sam?
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have the consent agenda. We've asked to have item L removed. Are there any items to remove, be removed?
Make a motion to approve a consent agenda with the exception of item L.
Second. Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Okay, entertain a motion on item L if there's no discussion.
Move to approve item L.
Second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty? Thurman?
Yes. There's no public hearings, appeals, presentation, recognitions, or awards. Citizens' opportunity to address the council. We had one person sign up, Kimberly Jackson. Repeat, please come forward and state your name and address.
My name's Kimberly Jackson. I live at 2750 North 7th Street, apartment 3415 here in Broken Arrow. I recently moved here, about a week ago, from Kansas City, and I'm happy to be here in the city of Broken Arrow. One of the things that I noticed and I wanted to bring to the council's attention is that today you see me, I look pretty normal. On a bad day, I'm in braces and I can barely walk, and so I have accessible parking. And one of the things that I've noticed in the city of Broken Arrow, specifically like the grocery store, Walmart, my place where I live, things like that, are people who do not have the accessible placards or tags, parking in accessible parking stalls. I think this is a financial opportunity for the city of Broken Arrow because it's $200 for the fine, and at a state level, it's $500 per person, 80% of that going to the city of Broken Arrow. And I would just request that maybe the city council encourage our officers to maybe enforce this a little bit more in our, in our city. I'm, I'm very proud to be here and plan on being here a good long time, so it's something I'd like to see happen.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I know that in the past, the police department had worked targeted enforcement, especially with Walmart. Not only did those individuals take up spaces that were designated for folks like yourselves, but also it was providing an opportunity for people to park their run-in, grab various things, and then exit the store without paying. So I see that the deputy chief of police is here, and I'm, I'm certain that he'll reach out to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 9A, presentation, discussion, review of proposed development for Ember's Grill formerly identified as a Red Creek Dance Hall. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. Back in August, city staff had received a request from Dave Sanders, a civil engineer with Sanders Engineering. He was seeking information on infrastructure for a proposed development located south of the Creek Turnpike near Tucson Street. As we began to respond to, from a staff perspective, some of the requests for, for existing infrastructure such as water lines and sanitary sewer lines, they're, the attorney for Mr. Steve Brunner contacted me and requested to know if we would be willing to meet with Mr. Brunner and also the engineer. So we had an opportunity to sit down and, and visit with Mr. Brunner, and he indicated at that time that he was going to open a, a dance hall. And it was originally identified as the Red Creek Dance Hall and Restaurant, and they had already identified a proposed vendor and provided us some information on that. Now, one thing that's very important about that particular development, I think if you've driven along the Creek Turnpike in that particular area, you can see that there, there is a structure that, that's going up and appears to be nearing completion. No city services are being provided at that particular facility. It's my understanding they're utilizing well water and that they're using an aerobic system for sanitary sewer. So we were advised by the city manager to, to bring it before council, which we did back in the fall. Additionally, Mr. Stevens, the city's economic development coordinator, and I met with Mr. Brunner and his attorney. Then we had another opportunity to allow the mayor and the former vice mayor to meet with Mr. Brunner, his attorney. I also contacted Jared Colley, who is an attorney with Bama Pis, Bama Industries, because he was so instrumental in addressing the prohibition of gaming at a different but very closely located site. And we asked him to come in and we sat down and visited with him as well. Now, obviously, one of the, the main concerns that, that we had was the possibility of gaming. This is, of course, a Creek Nation allotment. Whenever things like this happen, I think that rumors tend to, to get started, and so we tried to maintain close contact with Mr. Brunner, with, with his attorney, and also with the engineer. And I believe that the city manager, the mayor, and I all communicated that gambling in any form would, would not be well received by the council or by the citizens. And so one of the things that we discussed from a staff perspective was exploring the possibility of providing access to city services such as water and sanitary sewer with the condition that there would not be any gaming whatsoever. One of the, the things that was kind of interesting about this as we began to work through the process was they had retained an architecture firm. And in addition to the existing facility, which is not yet open, but supposedly will be open in August, the Ember's Grill, they were also proposing large area of that particular tract for multifamily. They were proposing a, an outdoor events area. They were also proposing a retail area to include restaurants. One of the things that concerned staff was the need to consider provision of access to city water mainly from a life safety perspective. I don't believe that the city, from a legal standpoint, would be required to provide water and sanitary sewer. Now, certainly, we could end up in, in litigation over that, but in order to protect especially the nearby residents, it was certainly something that we were willing to entertain recommending to council so long as the provisions were that, that no gaming would take place on this site. Now, unfortunately, we were advised by Mr. Brunner that they were considering gaming, but if they were, they were going to go that direction, that it would be in accordance with all existing laws. Because it would, it was, is, continues to be a Creek Nation allotment, the Creek Nation would, their gaming commission would essentially have to approve gaming at that location. Now, I have been told, and I believe it's been reported in the newspaper, that the Creek Nation would not be supportive of gaming at that location because they have another casino located in close proximity. And it creates duplicity in terms of, of revenues. There are only certain number of disposable income, I would guess, and so they don't want to be in a position of competing against themselves. During the times that we met with him, he made no mention of a reference to the Kealegi tribe. Now, we read in the newspaper recently, Luis Figueroa was one of the attorneys from Florida, and he actually was involved in the, the previous development. And so that put up a bit of a red flag for us. So we contacted our sovereignty lawyer, Mr. Stephen Bug with McAfee and Taft in Oklahoma City, and I actually met with him on, at least on a number of occasions. And we have been following the situation with great interest. Mr. Bug and I had the opportunity to meet with the first assistant attorney general last week, and we spent quite a bit of time impressing upon them, well, first of all, we spent quite a bit of time educating them on what transpired the last go-round. Because the attorney general's office on behalf of the state of Oklahoma actually brought a lawsuit against the individual members of the tribe as well as the, the developers. And while the first round in the district court level was successful, the court actually enjoined construction. It went up to the 10th Circuit, and the 10th Circuit eventually held that the tribe in this particular case did, did have sovereign immunity. But to date, no further development has, has gone forward. In handing down that decision, the 10th Circuit did emphasize that the state of Oklahoma does have other remedies available to prevent gaming. One of the things that they talked about is the gaming compact with the state of Oklahoma. One of the things when we met with the attorney general's offices, we inquired as to whether or not there was a gaming compact between the Kealegies and the state of Oklahoma. They were going to look into that. There's an arbitration provision in there, and we emphasized the need for the state to take action that way as well. One thing that I did think was pretty helpful that Mr. Bug and I discussed was, we think that the city of Broken Arrow would actually be a proper party. So in the event the state of Oklahoma chooses not to move forward with any sort of request for injunctive relief, the city, if the council were so inclined, could potentially bring in action in, in federal court in the event that the Kealegies attempted to game on this particular site. Because it's, it's our position that they have no jurisdiction to do that. We've also been advised that there's been an application filed with the National Indian Gaming Commission, and so our attorney is in the process of preparing a letter to the NIGC advising them that it's the city's position that they don't have the ability to game at this particular location. We plan to reach back out to representatives of the attorney general's office within the, the next week to find out where we are and, and where we're going next. I believe that you as a council in the city of Broken Arrow, we have a number of avenues available to us to move forward with this. Another thing that we discussed was trying to schedule a meeting between the city manager and the mayor with the, the chief, principal chief of the Muskogee Creek Nation. Because I, I believe that they would, they are taking a dim view, is my impression, of potential gaming outside their jurisdiction at this location. So I wanted to reassure the city council and also the public that we continue to watch this very, very closely, and will be prepared to bring to you resolutions and other enabling documents, advising staff to move forward with whatever actions we'll need in order to advance litigation, arbitration, or whatever other mechanisms are available. One thing I can say that I do think is, is an important distinction, and that is, because it's an allotment, a Creek Nation allotment, the city of Broken Arrow does not have the ability to impose its codes or anything else on this particular tract. However, if they lack the ability to game at this particular location, I, because they don't have jurisdiction, the Kealegies, then there, there are a number of avenues for us to explore. So I hope you consider that helpful. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Beth Ann? Do you have one person signed up to speak? Was there a question? One person signed up to speak, Patricia Lyle. Please state your name and address.
Patricia Lyle, 7204 South Peach Avenue here in Broken Arrow. I live less than two miles from the site of the construction of the business in question. What I'm hearing tonight further adds to my apprehension because what I'm hearing, counsel from the attorney, is more of a defensive position. And it would be my desire that the city council take a more proactive position with this. In a construction project, there is a lot of expense, and their best hope is to complete it quickly so that they can start having some income. And if I were in a position to request a, a stop to the construction until all of these issues got sorted out, that's what I would want. And I speak for myself and a lot of other residents that are within a very short distance of this location. They've already verbalized that gaming will be likely at this location, and so they're, that's intent. They're, they have total intention of trying to bring that in the back door. And so I say stop them before they start making any money. Because how long does it take to install some machines and have it happening before you even know it's happening overnight and a truck and an electrician? And it's so close to an elementary school. It's so close to large, large residential area. In, in my reading, in particular, an interesting article in the Washington Post in 2012, that was a, a survey of all kinds of studies done on gambling and what it does to communities. It increases crime, it increases suicide, it increases bankruptcy. Gambling facilities gain a large percentage, upwards of, it's arguable, between 35 and 42% of their entire income from people who are addicted to gambling. Very similar to the way that other things that are legal, like liquor stores, gain a large part of their revenue from people who are addicted to drinking. And so in order to fuel their income, they need a lot of people to become addicted to gambling or to bring the, these addicted persons in from other places. And, and that's bringing a lot of crime on the home front. We just bought our house just a little over a year ago in the Woodmeadow addition, just south of the Warren Theater, and we love the neighborhood and we love Broken Arrow. My husband works for PSO, and they brought us here five years ago. And I don't want to have to move, but if there's gaming that close, and I'm still raising children, I've got seven children, four are raised, and I still have three to go, and I don't intend to raise them that close to a gambling facility. And so we will sell the loss if we have to, to get away from it. And I know a lot of people agree with me that we need a very proactive way to stop this before it even starts. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Thank you. Sorry about that. If the council likes, what I could do is I'll put this back on in two weeks and also make a provision for council to take some action, prepare comprehensive resolution so that will enable staff to be prepared to move forward once, as we move through this process, if that's something you're interested in doing.
Has, sovereignty council, has it been discussed with him? Because I think that the question posed is, can we seek injunctive relief prior? And has that question been, been, I'm putting my lawyer hat on, I'm trying to think what legal grounds we have for injunctive relief at this point. Has that been discussed with the, with the sovereignty attorney?
It's something that we've, we've briefly discussed, but what, what I will do is we'll have that discussion with him, and we'll also put it on for executive session so that the council, I mean, we'll, we'll make a public portion, but we'll also put it on for executive session so that if there are any, if there is any reservation on his part as to doing that, that way at least the council knowingly understands what those would be.
I think the proclamation to certainly reaffirm with the citizens where our stand is would be very well received, certainly by, by myself, because, you know, we're, we're in opposi, I'm in opposition, and I think that resolution would be great if you bring that back to us. And, and also I'd like to say, I, I appreciate, this isn't like, we hear about this once every two weeks or once a month, but the city attorney has continually given us information that, as she receives it, and, and what avenues that she is going through to see if there's anything we can do. And we're, we, we get an email every few days about that, and I appreciate you keeping us informed with that also. Okay?
Okay, move on to item 9B, approval and authorization to execute First Amendment to, to the customer service agreement between the city of Broken Arrow and Windstream Communications for 911 services. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. The police department and the fire department are in the process of transitioning to AT&amp;T for the provision of 911 services. However, in order to maximize our access to 911 capabilities, because currently those are provided by Windstream, that particular agreement expires in the fall, and we just want to make sure that there's not going to be any lapse whatsoever. And also to create some redundancy until we resolve all of that, that piece up and other issues with AT&amp;T. That this particular agreement, it is a First Amendment which will enable us to do that, so we would request that you approve the First Amendment and authorize its execution.
Any questions of Beth Ann?
Make a motion to, for approval, authorization to execute the First Amendment to the customer service agreement with Windstream Communication for 911 Services.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9C, consideration, discussion, and possible approval and authorization to execute professional services agreement between the city of Broken Arrow and McAfee and Taft, attorneys at law. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. Francis Patrick Sharon is an employee in the fire department, and he filed an action against the city of Broken Arrow about a year or so ago. The case has kind of just been sitting there. We did do a, a full-blown investigation into the allegations that were made by Mr. Sharon. In fact, the city manager, under his authority, had utilized the law firm of Dornar Saunders to do this investigation. Because it is a very complex piece of litigation and also due to the press of business, the legal department believes in, in the city manager, strongly in support of retention of outside counsel to handle this case. I've capped it at $100,000 maximum and also set it to expire at the end of, of this upcoming fiscal year. McAfee and Taft has been representing the city for a number of years in labor matters, but I think what we're going to start doing in order to maximize transparency, typically all litigation is handled in-house by our attorneys, but whenever we do engage outside counsel for specific cases, if, if it's going to exceed the city manager's authority, we're, we're going to go ahead and place these on for your consideration. It's staff's recommendation that you approve and authorize execution of the professional services agreement with McAfee. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Beth Ann?
Is Mr. Plum a partner?
Yes, he is.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve and authorize executions, execution of the professional services agreement between the city and McAfee and Taft.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9D, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of resolution number 1030, a resolution against deep LLC luxury inns and suites for failure to report and pay occupancy tax. Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. In the past, a deep LLC doing business as luxury inn and suites has tended to be a little delinquent in terms of remission of occupancy taxes. However, in this particular case, it really has gone on for quite an extended period of time. We discussed this with the legal department, and, and the lawyers and I both feel that it would be a good idea to bring a small claims action, even though they actually owe, I think, close to 9,500. We can file it, and then a, as we move through this process, file a separate small claims action. But the, as you know, the process in small, small claims court is much more limited than a district court action. And so our hope is, of course, that the proprietor will come into compliance immediately once they have been served, but that doesn't always occur. So we are requesting that you approve resolution 1030 and authorize its execution.
Any questions of Beth Ann?
Make a motion to approve resolution 1030.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Booty?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9E, consideration, discussion, and possible adoption of a policy for nominating individuals to the city of Broken Arrow Planning Commission and the Board of Adjustment. Beth Ann? Oh, no, it's Larry. Beth, that's on Beth Ann's agenda here tonight.
I will say both Beth Ann and her team and I have been working diligently on this, and I appreciate their help as we craft this document along. This policy is to guide city council and staff on how we nominate the processes for the planning commission and the board of adjustment. Title 11, section 45102 requires the nomination of all planning commission to be made by the mayor and confirmed by the governing body of the municipality. In September of 2006, the city council passed ordinance number 3445 to be in compliance with state law. With any municipality that has an existing zoning powers as conferred underneath Title 11, section 43, the governing body of the municipality shall provide an ordinance for the adoption and appointment of the board of adjustment. This was done underneath ordinance number 294, pardon, 2964, and fulfills the state requirements. Traditionally, the members of the planning commission, the board of adjustment, were nominated by each district and at-large member and confirmed by city council to be in compliance with the changes of the state law and with the council members finding it important to continue to have the input of each appointments. Each council member will now recommend, or excuse me, each council member will recommend members for the boards to the mayor. The mayor will then make the final nomination of the members to the governing board, and then the board will then make that ratification. The policy document lines out exactly each step-by-step process along with terms and removal of office considerations. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions of Larry? Thank you.
Make a motion to adopt the policy for nominating individuals to the City of Broken Arrow Planning Commission and Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 9F, consideration discussion of possible approval to appoint Councilmember Deborah Wimpy to the Broken Arrow Public School Foundation.
Russell?
Thank you, Mayor. The Broken Arrow Public Schools Foundation was established in 1992 with the primary purpose of improving education through connecting the community with educators. The board consists of 27 members, and their bylaws do provide for the city council to appoint one associate director to the board, and that is a non-voting position. Councilmember Wimpy has indicated an interest in serving. As the council's appointee, and it is recommended that she be appointed to the board.
Thank you. Any questions, Russell?
I make a motion that we appoint Councilmember Deborah Wimpy to the Broken Arrow Public School Foundation.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Congratulations, Deborah. Item 10A, preview ordinances, consideration discussion and possible preview of an ordinance closing utility easement on property located northwest quarter of Section 22 Township 18 and North Range 14 East.
Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. In this particular case, the applicant is requesting closure of a portion of a 10-foot utility easement, as shown on the attached exhibit. All of the utilities are supportive of this. Staff recommends that you preview the ordinance and set it for adoption at the next meeting.
Make a motion, preview the ordinance and set for adoption.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 10B, consideration discussion of possible preview of ordinance amending Chapter 16 offenses.
Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. There has been considerable discussion about turning various felony-related drug offenses into misdemeanors. We are requesting that you amend the code in order to reflect these modifications which take place on July 1, 2017. One thing I can tell you, our new prosecutor started today, and so what I will do is instruct her to do a training bulletin to the police department, and also send her to shift change so that we can educate our police officers on the changes in the law. We would request that you preview this ordinance and set it for adoption at the next meeting.
Any questions for Beth Ann?
Make a motion to preview the ordinance and set for adoption.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 10B, consideration discussion of possible preview of ordinance amending Chapter 16 offenses, miscellaneous, Article 3.
Beth Ann?
Okay. State law now allows us to prosecute petty larceny up to $1,000. It was originally $500. This adds another tool in our toolbox, so we would request that you preview the ordinance and set it for adoption at the next meeting.
Questions? Beth Ann?
Make a motion to preview the ordinance and set it for adoption.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 11A, ordinances, discussion, and possible adoption of Ordinance 3486.
Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. This particular ordinance pertains to the Life Safety Code. This is something that I believe will be embraced by local merchants and retailers. It actually was brought to us courtesy of the fire marshal, who spent a considerable amount of time working with legal department in order to balance the safety of the public with development. There are no substantial changes in this. We would request that you adopt Ordinance Number 3486 and approve the emergency clause.
Make a motion to adopt Ordinance 3486.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Move for emergency clause for Number 3486.
Second.
Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 11B, consideration discussion of possible approval of Ordinance 3487.
Beth Ann?
Yes, sir. This is the ordinance that has to do with independent mobile food vendors. Before, it was treated a little bit differently under our existing code, and so Development Services specifically, Mr. Curtis came to legal department and requested that we make this revision. There are no substantial changes from the time it was previewed, or requests that you adopt Ordinance 3487 and approve the emergency clause.
Move to adopt Ordinance 3487.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Move for the emergency clause.
Second.
Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 12, remarks and inquiries by governing body members. Only thing I have to say is, I wish everyone a happy Fourth of July, and safe and happy Fourth of July, and take some time to reflect on the people that have spent time and even given their life to make us free, and make us safe so we can celebrate this holiday. Anything else?
That says it all.
I will go to item 13, remarks and updates by city manager. Anything, Russell?
I'll defer to the city manager when he comes on July 1.
I'll have a couple of things to say. We do have an executive session, so I entertain a motion for a recess to go into beta and Bama.
So moved.
Second.
Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. I'll call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority meeting to order.
Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Here.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Item 3, consideration consent agenda, any items to be removed?
Move for approval of consent agenda?
Second.
Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. We have no public hearings, hearings, appeals, presentations, or awards, general authority business, item 6A, consideration discussion of possible approval of the lowest responsible bid to Crossland Heavy Contractors, and approval for authorization to execute construction contract for a digester rehabilitation at Lynn Lane wastewater treatment plant. Anthony Daniel?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. This is one of the two projects that have been identified for improvements at the Lynn Lane wastewater treatment plant. The digester project is the first one, expected to take about six months, and the second one is the new headworks construction. Last year, around this time, around May, we came up to you and brought HDI's proposal for the headworks improvement. That project is about to be bid soon. This project will make improvements to two digesters, and one digester has been out for a while with sludge accumulated in it, and hopefully we'll get it done in six months, and the order release should come down a little bit, at least most of it. With that, I'm happy to answer any question, and the successful contract is Crossland Heavy.
Any questions of Anthony?
Move to award the lowest responsible bid to Crossland Heavy Contractors, Contractors Inc., and approve and authorize execution of a construction contract for the digester rehabilitation at the Lynn Lane wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. Item 6B, approval of Resolution 1031, it's a resolution authorizing execution of a contract for seller real estate, real property. Tom Hendricks.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Tom Hendricks, Planning Division Manager of the Engineering and Construction Department. This property purchase was for the 2 to 3 million gallon water tank, elevated water tank, and you've seen this before, you've authorized us to make an offer on a parcel at 101st and Lynn Lane. We made that offer, the property owners have accepted the offer, and we're asking to authorize us to proceed with the contract for sale. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Tom?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 1031.
Second.
Question second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. There's no executive session. We have one more motion.
Make a motion with Jarn.
Second.
Question second, roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Udi?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes. I'll call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority meeting to order.
Roll call, please.
Wimpy?
Yes.
Parks?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Udi?